Good evening. We're going to start our Board of Education meeting if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I just love it when we have all the students here and I can hear them saying the Pledge of Allegiance so loudly and proudly. We're gonna move on to our Golden Apple Awards. Dr. Bernia?
Yes, our first Golden Apple this evening goes to William Rayburn. William, where are you? William, go ahead and step on up. Right there in the least comfortable spot in the room.
I feel very comfortable right now.
There we go. Tonight's first Golden Apple recipient is William Rayburn, categorical teacher at Keith Elementary School. Previously, William also worked at Keith as a paraprofessional. William was nominated by Lisa Brewer, fifth grade teacher at Keith, because William engages with all of our students and always goes the extra mile to make meaningful connections with them. This includes a special connection with students who find school difficult. William lets them know they have a person they can count on at Keith. In William's nomination letter, Lisa shared, "William always comes to work with a positive attitude. He uses his great sense of humor to engage with students and staff. He's able to handle conflict with students calmly while displaying a sincere interest in their well-being. We are so lucky to have him at Keith Elementary." William seeks new ideas by attending training when necessary. He works collaboratively with staff in order to meet students' academic and emotional needs. He is self-motivated by the desire to meaningfully connect with all of our students, not just the students in the classroom he is assigned to. William goes above and beyond each day. He is driven by the desire to connect with students and be a positive influence in their life. He also makes a very concerted effort to maintain relationships with students he worked with in the past. He has even volunteered to give up his own break time in order to spend time with students who may benefit from his support. The students at Keith adore Mr. Rayburn. Dr. Marcy Augustine, principal at Keith Elementary, champion William's nomination sharing, "William Rayburn is an outstanding teacher at our school. He is hardworking and dedicated to his students. He always goes above and beyond and is willing to support our students, the teachers, and his colleagues with anything. His positivity and outlook supports our vision and mission at Keith. William, thank you for your hard work and dedication on behalf of everyone at Keith Elementary. It's our honor to recognize you this evening."
Well, they said I didn't have to speak, but I can't pass it up, so. I want to thank Lisa Brewer. I want to thank all the teachers at Keith. In the time that I've been there, they've been nothing but supportive. I can't imagine a better staff anywhere in the world, and I feel blessed and lucky every day that I wake up and I get to go there and work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our second Golden Apple recipient tonight is Andrea Schmidtling. Andrea, are you here? All right, come on up Andrea. Right there in front of the podium? No, on the other side. Sorry. Sorry, it's the live stream, it's not me. Tonight's second Golden Apple recipient is Andrea Schmidtling, crossing guard at Keith Elementary School. Although Andrea's nominator wishes to remain anonymous, that individual did share Andrea was being nominated because Andrea works hard daily to keep all children safe. Andrea is a positive role model for others by working so hard and going above and beyond each and every day. She makes efforts to know all of the students and families she crosses by name and truly cares deeply for their safety. Andrea has worked with the West Bloomfield Police Department to ensure she's doing all she can to keep students safe. She arrives at her post early, uses all of the safety equipment, and got permission from police who trained her to also use a cone in the road to stop traffic from turning when they shouldn't. In an email to building administration, a Keith parent shared the following, "I wanted to make sure the crossing guard at the intersection of Keith and Commerce Roads," that's not an easy job, friends, "gets the recognition she deserves. We honestly saw her save a little boy's life after school today. We were in our car on Keith at the light. Our light was fully green and the crossing guard started walking out across Commerce Road with her stop sign. A little boy, who was the only one crossing at the time, started to run ahead as they always do. She grabbed his backpack just in time and pulled him back into the snow pile as an SUV going west on Commerce completely blew the red light and did even slow down. I wanted someone to know that if it weren't for the crossing guard being so alert and her quick grabbing of his backpack, the worst would have happened. Andrea, thank you for your selfless act of heroism on that day and for all you do to keep our students safe every day. It's our honor to recognize you this evening."
I'm not a person to speak out loud, but I appreciate this very much. Thank you very much. And like he said too, that my kids, these kids are my kids also, so thank you.
We now have our Earth Day poster contest winners. Dr. Bernia?
For this one, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Good evening, everybody. We are pleased tonight to recognize the winners of the 2023 Earth Day Poster Contest. This is the 12th year of the contest, and we have what I believe is a record number 278 entries that were submitted from students across the district. Through an online voting process, district staff selected one winning poster from each division, elementary, middle, and high school. And I believe we have one or two of those winners here tonight to accept our congratulations on creating exemplary posters that highlight the conservation of our planet and its resources. Mrs. Mindy Miller, Mindy, oh, right in front of me, is our energy manager. She started this poster contest to bring more awareness to our energy management program and environmental stewardship. Under Mrs. Miller's direction, our energy management program has saved over $28 million since 2004. Those are dollars that would have otherwise been sent to the utility companies. So I would like to thank Mindy for running a great program and getting our students involved through this Earth Day Poster Contest. So, could I have, we know our high school winner, Alana Mariak is a 12th grader from Northern. We know she has some other school obligations tonight and couldn't be here. Is Ikoi Ajiro here tonight? We weren't sure if Ikoi could make it. Ikoi is an eighth grader from Walnut Creek Middle School. And we will show you their artwork here in a minute. But I believe Chloe Newman, Chloe, are you here? Awesome. Show the audience your work, Chloe. Chloe is a fifth grader from Wald Lake Elementary. Her design was voted as the favorite of all the elementary designs, and for good reason, it is outstanding. So congratulations, Chloe. And so I just, I wanted to let everybody know, in recognition of the great work that all the students did, our winners' artwork has been created in life-size form, and they will get to proudly display that for the rest of your life. So congratulations, Chloe, and all of our winners, and thank you very much. And we will be sure to get the other winners, do you have theirs, their artworks as well, middle and high school? Great work, everybody, thank you.
We're now gonna move on to the Kindness Matters Awards. Dr. Bernia?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Niall Mactary, principal of Clifford Smart Middle School, up to the podium.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Niall Mactary, proud principal of Clifford H. Smart Middle School and co-chairperson of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee along with Dublin Elementary Principal Danielle Beege, Wald Lake Elementary Principal Julie Aman, and Clifford H. Smart Middle School Assistant Principal Dan Holland. A significant part of our committee work is centered on honoring individuals dedicated to the service of others and in making our community a better place. And I'm honored to be here this evening to recognize our Kindness Matter Award winners. This year, we received over 50 nominations, which is the most we've ever received, which tells us what we already know. We have many incredible men, women, and children residing in Wald Lake schools. Our nominees being honored tonight are individuals in our school community who exhibit kindness, care towards others by demonstrating kindness on a frequent basis, going out of their way to make others feel better, and inspiring others to show kindness. This year, we have five individuals that were selected recipients of the Kindness Matters Award. Can the following awesome individuals please come down? We have Rosalie Johnson. Mackenzie Hurst, Mackenzie Hurst. Sherri Lutz could not be here this evening, but her daughter Jaclyn Lutz is able to join us. So Jaclyn, come on down. Dan Carlson. Dan had another commitment today, but ran over here to make it in time, so thank you. And we have Nancy Van Lewen. So Glenn Gary Elementary Principal Rosalie Johnson was nominated by Glenn Gary Elementary teacher Sarah Dots. Rosalie is always advocating self-care to her staff and consistently shows compassion and empathy towards everyone that works at Glenn Gary Elementary. She often checks on people when they don't feel well and personally checked on each individual with ties to Michigan State University and those who have college-age children following a tragedy that struck that campus. Sarah shared that Rosalie is the first and foremost a kind human being. She exercises empathy and a other-people-matter mindset every day. She looks for the very best in each person, and she meets, and she looks for other points of view and always assumes positive intent. Congratulations, Rosalie. Commerce Elementary student Mackenzie Hurst was nominated by mother Rachel Hurst and supported by her teacher Catherine Mundock and principal Christina Carlin. Mackenzie is always thinking about how others feel and is always inclusive. An example of this is when, instead of buying Valentine Day cards, she decided on her own to hand-write a letter to each student in her class. She took the time to find a compliment for each and every classmate. Commerce Elementary teacher Catherine Mundock shared, "I definitely support her receiving the award. She is an amazing student and has a big heart. She is very pathetic and always looking for ways to help others." Congratulations, Mackenzie, and great job. Next, we have Dean Transportation Bus Driver Sherri Lutz. She was nominated by Wald Lake parent Kelly Burnham and supported by Dean Transportation Director Brian Rochevick and Dublin Elementary Principal Danielle Beege. Sherri always has treats for her children and takes time to help them work through conflicts in a productive way. Parents have noted how while she has a difficult job, she handles it with class and kindness. Kelly shared that every single morning, Ms. Sherri shows up with a smile on her face to drive our kids. I never worry about my son's safety or anything on the bus because I know she will do everything she can to protect our children. Congratulations. Next, we have Wald Lake Northern High School teacher Dan Carlson nominated, supported by Christina Carlson and Wald Lake Northern High School Assistant Principal Chuck Froning. Dan volunteers his time at Wald Lake Northern High School, at his church, and within his community. While we can list the many things that Dan volunteers for, I believe what really stood out to me was when it was shared that after a tragedy at MSU, Dan went to the campus several days later and volunteered to welcome students back. And also brought with him over 500 boxes of Girl Scout cookies to hand out. His wife Christina shared that he circulates kindness everywhere he goes in any situation. And Chuck Froning shares that Dan's energy and positivity is amazing and admirable. His daily positive effect on kids at Northern is noticeable, and his recent efforts to comfort students at MSU is indicative of his service to others. Thank you, Dan. Next, we have Wald Lake Schools retired teacher, former Board of Education trustee, and current passion promoter of the Lakes Area Youth Assistant Organization, which supports local youth, Nancy Van Lewen. Nominated by Keith Elementary Principal Dr. Marcy Augustine. From volunteering in individual schools, supporting disabilities awareness workshops, to her very generous donations to each PTA and PTSA in Wald Lake schools, Nancy has spent her entire adult life dedicated to the service of the children and adults of Wald Lake schools. Dr. Augustine shared that I believe her contributions to our school and community have proven that Ms. Van Lewen is determined to make a difference in our world. Nancy, sorry, excuse me, Nancy's passion and dedication to student learning is inspiring. Her leadership, character, and dedication to all Wald Lake students make her an exceptional candidate for the Kindness Matters Award. Marcy, I have to say to everyone that it's a pleasure of knowing Nancy would absolutely agree with you. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of our Kindness Matters Award recipients and those that nominated them. Thank you for your acts of kindness, selfless commitment to making the lives of others better. We appreciate you. Thank you.
We're now gonna move on to art recognition. Dr. Bernia?
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, for the final time this year, I know this is what's brought so many of you, but being that this is our last art recognition, I wanted to just take a moment before we get started and really thank Mrs. Jennifer Todd, art teacher at Oakley Park Elementary, for working so hard. This, I had worked here for about a week, and I was approached and said, "Could we bring back the art awards? It's something that's kind of been put away, and we'd like to do it again." And I said, "Yes," but the way that she jumped into action and organized this and put this together for all of us, I really enjoyed this part of our meeting every month, and it wouldn't have happened without her considerable effort. So before I turn the floor over to her, I want to thank Jennifer Todd for her hard work. And ladies and gentlemen, the aforementioned, Mrs. Jennifer Todd.
Thank you, thank you very much, and we have been completely honored to have these awards back in person this year. I can't thank you enough for trusting us and my right hands, Lisa Solville, Dan Durkin, and everyone else to help make this work. So first of all, I want to say good evening. I am Jennifer Todd, the Elementary Art Department chairperson. And on behalf of the Visual Arts Department, it's my honor to welcome our distinguished artists, parents, guardians, and dear family members and friends to the opening reception for the spring Wald Lake Schools K8 visual art exhibition. Let's give our young artists an applause. We are thrilled to have you here to celebrate our students' incredible creativity and talent. The smiles and joy on everyone's faces illustrate how proud we are of you and your exhibition. I encourage you to explore the hallway art gallery, the scrolling art show above, and our district website next week to view the students' artwork. Tonight's art show and recognition night is a special opportunity to showcase the exceptional work of our students spanning kindergarten through eighth grade. We would like to express our gratitude to our Wald Lake School Board, thank you very much, administration, visual arts teachers and families for supporting our district visual arts programs and these students. We are proud to be a part of educating the whole child every day, and we hope this exhibition inspires and encourages everyone to explore their own creativity. Tonight, we are honored to recognize a select number of artists from Dublin Elementary with their wonderful art teacher, Mrs. Whitson. Can you raise your hands so that I can see you? They're the ones with the big smiles on their faces, too. They're very proud of you. Our wonderful art teacher from Keith Elementary, Mrs. Hartley. New to our district this year, our wonderful teacher from Mary Helen Guest Elementary, Ms. Scrinner. And from Sarah Banks Middle School, the great art teacher I just got to meet and face-to-face today was Mr. Laprise. These artists have demonstrated creativity, innovation, and visionary thinking through various media, and it's our pleasure to celebrate their achievements. So tonight, Superintendent Dr. Bernia will feature each artist by school to honor the artists this evening. Artists, when your school is announced, all of the featured artists from your school will walk to the front as a group and meet to face the audience. That way, no one has to walk up alone. When your school is announced, artists, please walk to your art teacher. So your art teacher will be standing right up here next to Dr. Bernia and receive your show certificate, and then proudly return to your spot in the group as other students are featured. After all of the students from your school have been recognized, Dr. Bernia, our school board president, Mrs. Casa Grande, and your art teacher will stand behind all of you for a group photo opportunity. Parents, that's your turn. And guardians, you are welcome to come up the center or side aisles if you'd like to take a photo at that time. Artists, remember to hold your certificates and smile. After the photo opportunity, students will return to their seats. And we ask everyone to remain seated until all four schools have been honored. The board will have a brief intermission after the awards for families to exit. Once again, congratulations to our talented artists, and we thank you, and then thank you, excuse me, to everyone for supporting our visual arts program. We hope you enjoy the exhibition and leave feeling inspired. Dr. Bernia will call the first school to be featured. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will open this evening with the artists from Dublin Elementary Schools. If they would come forward with their teacher? Congratulations to Bailey Wagner. Marlee Tobin. Cameron Conrad. Leela Ledbetter. I just didn't want to interrupt that. Grant Benjamin. Addison Cancer. Addison Cairo. Nash Keba. Antonio Cornetta. Emma Faran Cole. And Daniel Hurley. I'd like to welcome forward the artists from Mary Helen Guest Elementary. Congratulations to Elias Fuller. Juliette Cammer. Mirey Sugimoto. Margaret Randall. Alex Zaria. Harper Baboyage. Parker Dembski. Megan Virvu. Soa Sakao. Toby Hagan. Joelle Thorington. Connor McFarland. Suwon Kim. Dominic Canfield. Congratulations. Congratulations to the artists from Keith Elementary School. If they would come forward with their teacher? Congratulations to Charles Kraft. Julia Walton. Hadley Oswald. Tobias Frederick. Anderson Atwood. Lucille Niems. Jordan Martin. Joseph Maywood. Winnie Weiss. Elizabeth Hawkins. Siidu Kamara. Liam Weckstein. Ava Walton. Ailis Mayo. Camille Hampton. Madalena Miller. And River Coach. Congratulations. Our final school for tonight. Our final school for tonight with these artists and their teacher from Sarah Banks come forward. Yeah, you're good. You're good. Congratulations to Liana Fahidat. Bianca Gibbon. Rayana Mahmood Janalva. Leland Kahatri. James Wright. Scarlett Odish. Aiden Galvin. Maxwell Bros. Savannah Geisler. Elliot Sheppes. Logan Blankenship. Dima Gassai. Cindy Loezza Ohendes. Dylan Perry. Annie Gutierrez. Yume Knutson. Congratulations.
We'll resume the regular portion of the meeting at 7:45. So if, if you want to stay, that's great. If you have other places to be, we won't be offended.
We'll resume the regular portion of the meeting at 7:45, so if you want to stay, that's great. If you have other places to be, we won't be offended. We are back. And we're going to move on to proclamation, employee recognition week. Dr. Bernia, sorry.
Okay, Madam President, next week is Employee Recognition Week. It is a week where we stop and take stock of how important our employees are and all that they do for the children of the community. And that cuts across many lines. All of us sitting at this table have a school employee that changed our lives in one capacity or another, whether it was a teacher you had, or your bus driver, or the school secretary, or your principal, or in my case, the school custodian who supervised my detention time, which I still hold the record for at my Catholic school. But certainly, we do want to recognize our employees next week. They are exceptional people that show up day in and day out to serve our children well. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas, the week of May 8 through 12, 2023 has been designated Wald Lake Schools Employee Recognition Week to recognize the excellent contributions of all employees throughout the district. And whereas, the staff of Wald Lake Schools is an outstanding group of employees, each and every one of them essential to maintaining the quality education we offer our students. And whereas, although the Board of Education has honored employees on an individual basis during the year, the other devoted and dedicated staff members in the district have received little formal recognition for their able and distinguished service. And whereas, our paraeducators, food service workers, secretaries, warehouse delivery persons, mechanics, maintenance persons, teachers, supervisors, and administrators are highly valued members of the Wald Lake Schools family. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Wald Lake Schools' Board of Education and the administration hereby proclaim May 8 through 12, 2023 Wald Lake Schools Employee Recognition Week and thank and congratulate all our school district staff for their excellent contributions to the education of the students of Wald Lake Consolidated School District."
Thank you. We're going to move on to public commentary. For those of you who have not spoken before, this is your chance to address the board. When your name is called, you can come up to the podium over here to the right. Typically, you have about three minutes. If you can use that time, you can use less time. If you do get close to that three minutes, Mrs. Levin over here will time, and she will let you know if you're close. This is your chance to address the board. We ask that you address your comments to the board and to the administration here. And if there is something that we need to get back with you, we'll try to do so in a timely manner, typically within a few business days. And I'm going to go ahead and call you up. The first person is Susie Crafton.
Hi, those in attendance, and thank you to the board for all that you do. I just wanted to publicly thank the PTA and PTSAs in our district. They have either done or are going to do an incredible Staff Appreciation Week that requires tons of volunteers and lots of hours making things look beautiful, taste beautiful, and be just a smidgen of the thanks that our staff deserves. Thank you to all of the staff, teachers, administrators, for all you do for all kids every day. You're very appreciated. Thanks.
Lynda Brandis?
Thank you for offering parents and citizens the time to come and speak to you. In this day where children spend most of their time on anything with an electronic screen, what parent wouldn't be thrilled to see that the child is brought home a book from school? Especially if it's an older child in high school, that is, until we see what book they're reading. It's come to my attention that a book named "Oryx and Crake", a novel by Margaret Atwood, that's Oryx, O-R-Y-X, some might recognize it, is available in both the Northern and Central High School, which seems to be nothing but a training book for the sexualization of our teenagers. Every parent should write down and use this site, booklooks.org. This site allows you to input the name of a book and will give you a summary of the book and any concerns a parent might have. For the book I referenced, when I viewed it online, I found 18 pages. They list per page what the offensive language is. And make note, some of it was so bad that, in good taste, I would not even read it to adults. A school should be a place of learning, but not, this has nothing to do with learning how it's found on a shelf. I just can't imagine. The summary of concerns lists this book contains alcohol use, drug abuse, sexual activities, sexual nudity, profanity, suicide, violence, inflammatory religious commentary, and inexplicit bestiality. What does this have to do with learning anything that comes from our high school? Thank you. It's for this reason that the Greater School Initiative was needed in the first place. And for those parents who may not know what this is, or have never heard of the term GSI, this is a group of concerned parents and community members coming together to inform parents of their rights within the Michigan school system. The state of Michigan has strong laws regarding schools and sex education. Parents have the right to opt out of their student from any and all sex education, discussion, promotion, and coercion without penalty to your student. I encourage all parents and concerned citizens to go to thegreatschoolinitiative.org and be informed. If it is then your choice and you want your child opt out of these types of books in your schools and classes, there are appropriate forms and information that can be found. Now make no mind, I am not saying that we should be banning books, but I think we should have appropriate books in our school for the appropriate level of the student. In this upside-down world where books like "To Kill a Mockingbird" are no longer considered appropriate, yet a book which offers absolutely no value somehow has made it onto our bookshelves. Due to the limitations of time tonight, I've singled out this one book, but this is not the only book of concern to parents. Can I just finish? I'm on my last thought. While I'm here to comment and inform other parents to watch for what their children are reading, I'm asking you, our Board of Education, who exactly approves these books? How do they, and it's a serious question, how do they make it onto the shelves of our school? Who has final?
We can have somebody follow up with you.
I appreciate that. Is there one person that has a final say? And most importantly, what is the process to remove them? Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy Murray. Kathy Murray?
Good evening. My name's Kathy Murray, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Mary Helen Guest Elementary School. I'm here this evening to tell you some of the great things that's happening in our school. One of the things is our Level 3 Resource Room program adopted a cow this year through the Discovery Dairy. The free program provided multi-level lessons and cross-curricular standards. The students found out that Guest requires five cows to provide milk for school each day. They learned the whole process of curing for a calf to getting milk to the dinner table. They took virtual field trips of the dairy farms and even watched a live feed of a calf being born. Their cow Daisy was born on 9/3/22 at 92 pounds. It was adopted from Battle Creek at Crandall Farms. The milk from their cows are used for various mozzarella cheeses and 80's ice cream. Yum. Students weighed each other to find which combination of students would weigh the same as Daisy at various stages of her development. At six months, she weighed 450 pounds. The students also enjoyed choosing facts and pictures to hang in the hallway to display for other children to learn about. Students are enjoying a new Gaga Ball pit that was installed this year on the playground. And our PTA is currently looking to install a new rock wall in the gymnasium. Third graders made cards and friendship bracelets for local foster care. Third graders have also have a classroom tower garden that they grow healthy snacks, such as snap peas that they eat from. First graders received grants from the Detroit Zoo for virtual field trips. They learned about polar bear adaptations and penguins. First graders also received a grant to help with the cost of bringing the Ann Arbor Hands-on Museum to Mary Helen Guest Elementary for in-house field trip with 10 exciting science experiments. We are proud of the Mary Helen Guest Wildcat Singers Choir. We have, this extracurricular group has 50 4th and 5th graders. It's 40% of all of our 4th and 5th graders that are in the choir. They performed with the middle school choirs in March, and they had a successful all-school assembly in April. And last of all, Guest staff cares so deeply about the children and families. We have a closed pantry, a food pantry, and we have a partnership with Easter Seals where the Easter Seals counselor is housed at Guest two days a week to provide services to students and families. Each year, we provide meals and gifts for over 30 Guest families during the holiday season. Thank you.
Kristy Rust?
Thank you. I wanted to start tonight by congratulating Mr. Riley at Geisler Middle School on his pending appointment. He's a great fit for Geisler, and I'm assuming that it will probably take place since he's here. I would hope he wouldn't come. It's been great transition. It was sad when Mrs. Lowen left, but he has just been wonderful for the students there. So this is very exciting, since I have a 6th grader there. I also wanted to touch base about, I know you're looking at or bringing forward a new social studies textbook for 2nd and 3rd graders, and if my math is correct, those are like 7-, 8-year-olds, maybe turning 9. And in part of the teacher edition, it talks about creating a culture of inclusion, which is fantastic, right? I'm a schoolteacher, which most of you know. I've been in many schools with lots of different students, always in elementary. The part that's concerning about this is it talks about pictures, considering the pictures that you hang on the wall in your classroom. And it says, quote, "Are there children of many ethnic and racial groups represented? Are there children with disabilities?" Fabulous. That should be there. It's the next part that's concerning. "Children with various sexual identities." These are 7- and 8-year-olds. I'm not sure why this is in the teacher's manual about what you might hang on your wall when you're talking with 7- and 8-year-olds. So I would consider you to look elsewhere and find a social studies book that doesn't include sex when you're talking about 7- and 8-year-olds. And then finally, I just wanted to say that I've been coming to these meetings for a long time and speaking for a long time, and it is nice to hear dialogue from administration and from the board about what's going on in the district and also questioning things that come up. I like to hear the dialogue, the concerns, and the thoughts that board members have. So it's a breath of fresh air to actually hear some things when you come to the meetings. Thank you.
Gina Gregory?
Hi. I'm so excited to be back here. I've been a parent and still get a charge out of being here. It's great. You do a lot for kids, and I think that's so special. And kids really do have a good education here, and I'm proud to be here. Tonight, I was here 15 years ago with a book. I'm back with a new edition. And this is a gift to the Board of Education. Local residents, myself and my husband, bring us the history of Pleasant Lake in the southwest section of West Bloomfield Township, Michigan, engaging the reader in the creation, habitation, development, and current status of Pleasant Lake and its surrounding area. Filled with anecdotes, this memoir of a loved place is enough information for readers to enjoy. The story reflects the development of greater West Bloomfield from indigenous people to European descendants with farms and the first West Bloomfield store, to a 1922 subdivision platted for Detroiters as an affordable summer resort, with a 1940's association of summer cottage private owners with communal property, a small factory, riding stables, and a 1989 condominium development, all shape what we see today, Pleasant Lake. The project began for our 75th birthday as a small book. Then it was reproduced in 2007 as 98 pages. And then for our 100th anniversary, we were out of copies, and so we reformatted it, and we did it during COVID. So we have 40% more text, 150 color pages, 375 images as a full-color softcover book. A different stunning full-color photograph is featured on the front and back of the covers. The table of contents has 120 subheadings, and contributions from 32 sources provide perspectives, scenic photographs, canceled development projects, COVID memories, Donahue drain installation, historic and pioneer research, land conservancy, natural beauty, property donation, and wildlife sightings. There'll be a YouTube video of our home movies that will be aired online soon. A copy is being donated to the board, Pleasant Lake Elementary, Walna Creek, and Wald Lake Central, and I hope to deliver them to the schools this month. Then with multiple printings to correct production areas, I have additional copies that will be available for educational purposes. So I'm looking forward to really putting them in the hands of students. A quick flip-through is just chock-full of photographs and the history of this area. So it was fun to do. And there's a lot in it about the schools that are here. The beauty of Pleasant Lake Elementary, of Walna Creek, the natural trail, the pathways. It's a great area, so it's been fun to put together.
Thank you. If you want to give the book to Mrs. Levin, she'll take it. Thank you. Lisa West?
Good evening. First, I want to go ahead and let you know, Mrs. Johnson, who received the kindness award, she absolutely deserves it. She is an amazing principal at Glengarry Elementary. I see her always having a smile on her face when you walk through those halls, consoling a child who's crying, to kids coming up and giving her hugs. She's amazing. So very well deserved. I do want to address, though, I gave a comment last month regarding security. Approximately 20 people gave public comment last month. About half of them spoke about security. I don't know about other people, but I know personally, I never had a response back regarding my concerns, which is very disheartening, considering that the board is elected by the citizens, and yet we're hearing nothing. Security is a strong topic. It's a hard topic. I understand that. It's very sensitive. But we need to have this open discussion. You know, just a couple days ago, a mile from my house, we all received that email from Dr. Bernia regarding the barricaded gunman. It's a mile from my house. Just the day before, I actually had an appointment with Mrs. Johnson regarding security at Glengarry. Who would have think that the next day, my husband tells me he sees a SWAT team outside, just down the street from us? We need to have an open discussion. I know it's not easy, but it has to happen. It's never easy. One thing I was really impressed with, Mrs. Johnson, when we were able to have this open discussion, was the Alice training that they did. The fact that next to each phone, they have a number to make sure, because when we're in an emergency, we forget things. And that's okay, because our minds just go. But next to each phone is a phone number. They're going to update it with the address of the school, because, like I said, we forget things, as well as the room number they're in. And she said that they do that at their school, but she's not sure if it's done at every school. This is a wonderful protocol that is done. They also used fire hoses to put over the hinges of their doors, because they're strong enough to help barricade and make sure that doors can't open. We need to continue talking about this. I've given suggestions. I understand that there are things that can't be discussed because they're confidential and vulnerable, but we still need to have something done. So please, Mrs. Levin, I want to thank you for announcing that you received a security appraisal. I know it can't be discussed, but that's okay. But we need to have, like, let people know what's going on. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Marlene, is it Roth or Rofe? Rofe, thank you.
My name is Marlene Rofe, and I live in the Wald Lake School District. I would like to first thank the school board members for your service to the community. You serve without pay. You have many issues to consider, study, and review on your own time. I think that attendees at this meeting and all the parents watching on livestream should remember that. Also, I don't think it is appropriate to single out individual board members for criticism at this meeting. Whether you have children currently attending schools in our district, or whether you are affiliated with certain community or political groups is irrelevant. You are now the elected members of this school board. Just as our school board president stopped audible audience disapproval of one of the speakers last time, it would seem appropriate to stop or remind speakers not to disparage any one of the board members. Let me repeat, I appreciate your service. I want to address the issue of inappropriate books in our school libraries. There are actually three that I have to reference today. The first one is a book called "Perfect" by Ellen Hopkins, and it's in three of our high schools. school libraries. It's an interesting title, because in my opinion, it is perfectly obscene and inappropriate. It depicts in graphic detail sexual activities, including, I won't even say which ones. The world is dark and troubled enough without filling the minds of teenagers with such hopeless and degenerate material. And the other two inappropriate books are Water for Elephants by Sarah Gruen, and this is also in all three high school libraries. And this one also contains sexual nudity, sexual activities, et cetera. Of course, major media outlets heap praise on this book and highly rate it. In our hyper-sexualized society, people are conditioned to regard this stuff as normal and desirable. Those of us who see serious problems are branded and mocked as square, uneducated, and interfering with the First Amendment rights of others. What about our rights as parents to protect our children from being immersed in this garbage? There are laws against distributing explicit material to minors. Why aren't these being observed? And the next book is called The Perks of Being a Wallflower by Stephen Chabasky, and it also includes sexual activities. I support the efforts of Great Schools Initiative to combat the hyper-sexualization of children. Parents can download from their website the opt-out forms. It's about time something is done about all this. Thank you.
Tatiana Santana? Did I get that correct or close? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tatiana Santana. I have three children in the Wald Lake School District. I have had the opportunity to review the new AP Government Textbook, which has been proposed for use in our school district, and I'd like to share my opinions about it. I'm concerned about the lack of balance and bias in this material. It is often subtle and sometimes even blatant. The problem we often see is that we apply the moral ends of our era to complicated issues of the past. We therefore unfairly denigrate people who should be respected and admired for good things they accomplished. Let me give you an example. On page 36, it says that the issues of slavery was not debated in terms of morality or liberty at the Constitutional Convention, but rather in terms of state's representation. The issue of slavery was settled not based on high ideals, but on practical, political considerations. Does we paint the picture of the founding fathers as hypocrites and not worthy of the respect they usually have been given for the past 200 years? The next step is to debunk the U.S. Constitution. After all, why value something produced by men supposedly lacking in moral integrity? We know that many of the founders were slaveholders. Not a single one of them argued that slavery was good. None of them justified it. The problem was what to do about it. They had just fought an eight-year war with Great Britain. The prospect of engaging another war with the South was horrendous. The country was already trying to recover from families torn apart by war, and the nation was in great financial debt. We understand that the Constitution was a compromise. African-American Frederick Douglass, who was an abolitionist, started out saying that the Constitution was a pro-slavery document. It was a covenant with death in a pact with hell, he said. But Douglass changed his mind later as he read the document and came to understand historical context and political necessity behind it. He referred to the Constitution as a glorious liberty document. He said the appropriate way to get rid of slavery was by constitutional means, even if it took time and not by revolution or war. Why doesn't this government textbook reflect and include this view? The textbook is filled with attacks and mocks Republicans all over it, every single page and every single chapter of it. And I was wondering, while looking at those pages, why we don't have any Republican side being represented in the book? So I think it's just, I share this because I think we need to reconsider whether this textbook is appropriate for our students. And we talk about diversity all the time, but when we are supporting religion or Republicans, we don't have the diversity included. And I would love to see it. I would love to see balance and equality in every single thing, including Republicans and religion.
Thank you.
So I think it's not appropriate for our kids. Thank you.
Our next person is Dorina, and I'm not going to say the last name correctly. Someone will let you say it.
I'll give you until my oldest son graduates. He's a sixth grader.
I know, I try so hard. I just don't want to get it wrong.
You're good. Good evening. My name is Dorina J. Kai. I have two children attending in Wald Lake School District. I was able to review the new proposed curriculum for K through two social studies. I would like to make a few comments about it. In the teacher's instructions, it advises the teacher to set up the classroom so that every child feels welcome. Pictures on the wall should represent children from many ethnic and racial groups, and kids with disabilities, and various sexual identities. This inclusiveness is to be a daily priority of teachers. Sexual identities? Wait a second there. In kids from kindergarten to second grade, my kids know their identities. It was not assigned to them at birth. It was God-given. It is offensive to me that this ideology is creeping into all our classrooms, and teachers must embrace it. I don't want my children to be exposed to this confusion. Based on my religious beliefs, there are two sexes, male and female. There are two symbols that represent sex orientation hanging in the room of my son's sixth-grade math class. Sexual-oriented symbols should not be in a math class. This is against Michigan law. Under these new ideologies that are being taught, my children are being shown no compassion and consideration for their needs to be affirmed in the religious and traditional values my husband and I want for them. If you are choosing to bring sex education to our schools, that should be taught in a specific classroom by a teacher who is certified for the subject, and not all over the school. Parents should have the right to sign up their children for the class or opt them out, and schools must accept the opt-out form, even if it's written on a sticky note by a parent. I understand the effort to teach about diversity of cultures. I would hope that in doing so, the American culture is not put down. It is unique and should be valued just as much. I say this from the perspective of an immigrant. Respect for the beautiful American flag, singing the national anthem. In some schools, teachers are being told not to use the word "American," as it may be distrustful to some people. I will tell you what words are upsetting: Cuba, North Korea, Venezuela. I am proud to be an American, and I want my children to be proud too and not ashamed of this beautiful country. Thank you for your time.
Christine Titus.
I'm Christine Titus. I'm a proud educator at Hickory Woods Elementary, and may the fourth be with you. Just a few things, some good things that I've been seeing across the district. I noticed that seven of our schools were recognized for being green schools. My building, one of them. And I just wanted to give a little bit of a shout-out to my teammate Karen Burlduggan, who makes great strides in making sure that our school qualifies for that evergreen status. And I know a lot of hard work goes in to those recognitions, so I would like the folks to know that their work is appreciated in making sure that our planet is sustainable, and we do what we can at our buildings to make that so. Mrs. Kaplan, I'm sorry I might steal some of your thunder, but Tarzan was awesome, put on at Wald Lake Central. Mr. Titus and I had the opportunity to go see it, and we absolutely loved it, as we love all of the musicals put on by all of our high schools. On April 27th, the half-day that we just had, we had, for our folks, our educators and parents and all those folks, an EdCon event. Thank you to Mrs. Kohansky and her team for pulling together a bunch of very dedicated folks to present to their colleagues. And the feedback that I got from colleagues in my building was that it was a half-day well-spent, and they learned a lot of great information to help them teach the students in this district in a manner that's befitting of them. And it's great to be able to tap the resources that we have within our own district to be able to present to other colleagues. So I wanted to acknowledge those folks and Mrs. Kohansky and her department. Finally, as we are approaching Employee Recognition Week, I wanted to kind of give a little in memoriam to a teacher who passed away last month, Linda Smith. She was a first-grade teacher at Oakley Park. And personally, I didn't realize until I was thinking about her memorial and such that she actually inspired me as a parent volunteer to go into teaching, which I did, as my husband calls it, my third career. So as a parent volunteer, she inspired me to become a teacher. And just wanted to give that recognition to her and to memorialize her work in the district for many, many years. So thank you so much.
And Gast.
Thanks, Chris, for making me cry. I also worked with Linda Smith, so she was a wonderful woman. Hi, I'm here from Wald Lake Elementary to share with you some of the amazing things that are happening right across the street. First off, we have a fantastic positive behavior system at Wald Lake Elementary that encourages students to show their tiger traits by being respectful, responsible, and cooperative. We honor students daily with little orange tickets that recognize positive behaviors. Students' names are drawn weekly and shared on the news to help encourage positive behavior around the school. We also celebrate positive behavior by each adult in the building giving out a Golden Paw Award once weekly to showcase students going above and beyond the expectations. We have a Second Step Assembly that coordinated with our Second Step lessons. They bring our school community together and show students that we all have the same expectation for our school's social, emotional learning. Our recess supervisors are working hard to integrate the strategies that they have learned throughout their Playworks training. A new favorite of students is the weekly games that are taught to them. We are also very lucky to have a group of parents who have stepped up to become our building substitutes. They are going above and beyond to learn the ins and outs of the classroom, and have ensured that we are able to be away from our classrooms when we need to be and have our classrooms covered. We are excited to be offering our second set of before-school tutoring offered through the grant money. Our first two sessions included math support for fourth and fifth, no, sorry, third and fourth graders, and coding for third and fourth-grade girls. Our second two sessions are focusing on literacy instruction for kindergarten and first-grade students. We also have our service dog, Wally. We are able to offer to the staff a schedule for him, and it really helps support our classrooms and our students and our staff. This has brought us all closer together, and it's something that we're excited about, and he's a rock star. Wally is a big part of our community. We are fortunate enough to be welcoming a part-time behavior interventionist using grant money. She will be joining Wald Lake Elementary with the hopes of continuing to create behavior support plans that meet the needs of both students and staff. I'm going to skip some of this. Kindergarten is excited to welcome potential new kindergarteners to a story hour, and they are also lucky to have community volunteers to read to our kindergarteners once a month. This year, kindergarten and first grade welcomed over 40 parents as volunteers to facilitate an amazing 100th-day celebration. First grade is finishing vowel teams and vowel towns, and Mr. Malonis is going to tell you about the rest of our school.
Ben Malonis.
There's so much happening at Wald Lake Elementary, two of us. Thank you to the board. I'm Ben Malonis. I'm a 29-year teacher at Wald Lake Elementary. I'm very proud. Thank you for letting me talk about a place that I love. As Amy said, our first grade recently finished learning different things in literacy, and they're working on applying high-level vocabulary in their reading and writing through rich mentor texts. In addition, they've organized a visit with an author who shared her story and love of patchwork quilts. Second grade has a field trip coming up. They will be visiting the Wald Lake Police Station, Fire Station, Public Library, all in to support and enhance their social studies curriculum. Third grade enjoyed a virtual field trip to the Capitol Building in Lansing to kick off their government unit in social studies. And they recently invited a Petoskey Stone enthusiast to share about our amazing state stone. They are preparing to host a second speaker at Wald Lake Elementary to culminate their learning about Michigan's history with an interactive experience about the life of a voyager during the French fur trade. Our fifth-grade classes have been buzzing with excitement and energy as they explored a variety of subjects through innovative and engaging activities. One of the highlights of fifth-grade curriculum this year has been the participation in fantasy book clubs. The students have been eagerly reading a variety of fantasy novels and discussing them in small groups. Not only has this helped to foster a love of reading, but it's also allowed the students to develop their critical thinking skills and to learn how to analyze literature in a deeper way. In addition to fifth-grade book clubs, each of the students has also created an informative Google website on the Road to Revolution. This project allowed them to dive deeper into a history and research the events leading to the American Revolution. In February, WLE had a Title I Family Engagement Night. We partnered with the Wixom and Wald Lake Libraries and helped families sign up for library cards. Families learned math games to play at home, and students attended a free book fair. It was a great evening. The families that attended were surveyed, and 100% of them said that they would attend another WLE Family Engagement Night. One participant even added, "I wasn't sure what to expect, but we honestly enjoyed everything about the evening. The fact that we were able to receive useful tools to better assist our child's learning, on top of everything being free, what more could I ask for? Maybe milk and cookies? Oh, wait, that's how the night ended. This is honestly one of the best events I've attended at an elementary school. Thank you so much." On behalf of the teachers at Wald Lake Elementary, I want to say that we are incredibly proud of the effort and dedication that our students have demonstrated throughout the year, and we could not do everything without the support of our administration, our support staff, our PTA, our Board of Education, and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Jennifer Todd.
Now I'm going to face you guys for once. Dear School Board and District Administration, I want to speak to you not just as your art department chairperson, but as one of your graduates of Dublin, Clifford Smart, and Wald Lake Central. So I am a product of this district and am passionate about the things and the successful things that are happening. I'm honored to speak to you about the remarkable points of pride of our K-12 Art Department this year, made possible by your support. I am honored to be a small part of such a unique team that works kindergarten through 12th grade every year. Our art department has dedicated itself to developing the art curriculum, exploring content-specific PD, supporting Wald Lake Schools' arts initiatives, and reintroducing the in-person art shows, and most of all, teaching our wonderful students. Curriculum, this year, our work to update the K-12 art curriculum, I'm trying to speed, can you tell? Has been a priority. We have been exploring new national art standards and how to integrate the new approaches with the Michigan Arts Curriculum. Regarding Professor Regarding professional development, we are proud to have sent our elementary art department members to attend the Michigan Art Education Fall Conference. We've also collaborated with the Art of Education Flex Curriculum to develop our teaching practices. Some of our teachers workshopped and applied for the Foundation of Excellence Grants and were awarded media to help them support their students. In terms of Wald Lake's and state initiatives, our teachers and students actively participate in district events such as the MLK School Projects, PTA Reflections Program, and Earth Day poster content. Our high school students in state events receive gold, silver, and honorable mention in Scholastic Art Awards. And one of our biggest points of pride was the reintroduction of the in-person art shows this year. Thank you to Dr. Bernia, Administration, and Board of Education for welcoming back our monthly K-12 and Spring Art Show. Other wonderful shows that included were at the high schools. Central had their show, Northern and Western, in the spring. And we are also featuring artwork monthly at the Wald Lake Credit Union. Speaking of the return of the K-12 show, here's my shameless plug. I should say, my points of pride. We look forward to, I'm like the kids with the certificate upside down, to our final culminating art K-12 Spring Show starting May 20th through the 28th at the Commerce Township Library. A special reception for the public and artists will be held Wednesday, May 24th from 5:00 to 7:00. Thank you to Lisa Solville, Dan Durkin, Jason Lewis, and Pam Cole for working with myself, Brandy Carlson, and Kelly Tillman to promote, celebrate, and share the art show with the public. We are grateful for the support of the School District and Administration and Board of Education making these accomplishments possible. Jennifer, slow down. We are excited about the future and look forward to continuing our partnership and collaboration with our district to provide our students with the best possible art education. Thank you.
Thank you. I got more nervous than that. We're gonna move on to administrative commentary. Dr. Bernia.
We're gonna go this way tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Les.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The state budget season is well underway. We've now had an opportunity to review all three plans that have been proposed, both the Senate, House, and Executive Plan. I've summarized those for you, you'll receive that tomorrow, that gives the details of each of the plans and the impact that each of those would have on Wald Lake Schools. It's my understanding that the May Revenue Estimating Conference is going to be held on May 19th, so we would expect that further progress would be made after that, so we'll keep you posted.
Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. For the consideration tonight on the consent agenda, you will be voting on the appointment of Mr. Riley to the principal at, to be the principal at Geisler Middle School. Mr. Riley has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, a master's degree from the University of Wisconsin, has spent 30 years in Wald Lake, part of which is spent just recently as an interim principal at Geisler, two and a half years as a principal, as assistant principal at Wald Lake Central, 19 years as the director of the Wald Lake Outdoor Education Center, and eight years teaching fifth and sixth grade. It is my pleasure to recommend him as part of your consent agenda.
Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Just wanted to remind everybody that bond work is underway. We have begun demolition in the media centers at Pleasant Lake, Meadowbrook, and Hickory Woods. Again, greatly appreciate the patience of those schools and allowing us to get in there early and get some much-needed productive work completed before the end of the school year. And we had a great topping-out ceremony at Wald Lake Western a couple of weeks ago where the final beam that was signed by hundreds of students and staff were placed atop of Western and we now begin completing the envelope, so we're extremely excited about that.
Mrs. Kohansky.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bernia. We were excited, Mrs. Titus kind of stole my thunder a little bit. I wanted to just mention that April 27th, we had a wonderful half-day professional development session, a lot of colleagues, leading colleagues in learning, and that's something that our teachers have been asking for in feedback surveys. They want to learn from one another and they want time to collaborate with one another. And so we were able to offer that for them, and so the feedback has been incredible. I want to thank those that presented, as well as everybody's participation, because it really was a big, a big lift to organize a giant event like that and we were, we had every elementary teacher and I believe special services teacher at Banks Middle School. So thank you to Mrs. Calhoun and her team for hosting us at Banks and welcoming us in so we could set up. One other piece, just to piggyback off of what Mr. Chatfield talked about with the bond work, I was really happy in the last few weeks, in the last month, but just last week, we were continuing our work with the High School Furniture Committee. So as you know, as part of the 2019 bond, furniture renovations are a part of the overall work. We've been able to pull together a really nice comprehensive group from the high schools, including administration, and we will be looking at establishing some really nice furniture standards coming up for, for the work that will be done at Western and Central coming up in the summer of '24, and then Northern will receive those updates in the summer of '25.
Thank you. Mr. Durkin.
Nothing for me this evening, Dr. Bernia.
Dr. Lanz.
Nothing for me, thank you, Dr. Bernia.
I wanted to let the community know to be watchful. We're set for our spring community conversations, much like the last time, we will move around the community and so we, we took your feedback this time and we alternated some days and we alternated some times. So we have, we have a morning slot and an afternoon slot and then an evening slot and we hope to see you, we'll be out in your neighborhoods and, and hope that you can make it. I want to also underscore, you know, we, we think we're gonna stop and focus on our staff and predominantly that focuses on the staff in the school buildings that work with the children and that is right. But we also have a number of people that work at our Operations Center and work here at the Ed Service Center that are just tireless employees who show up every day. Folks that have gotten to know me know that I come from, I come from a small town full of farmers, and so when I say you work hard, I'm from a farm town, so that means something different. And I can tell you that the people here work very, very hard and, and really do a great job and are focused on doing the right work for the right reason, and so I appreciate them too, particularly my cabinet that's been working so hard lately. And last, we are in the era of live stream and it's come to my attention through some text messages and phone calls, my parents watch the live stream, so I wanted to give a shout out to my mom and dad, especially as, especially as Mother's Day draws near. Just let the record, get that in the minutes if you don't mind. Please. Thank you, Madam President.
Move on to board commentary, I'm gonna start over here. Mrs. Fernandez, anything tonight?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, Tarzan, the musical, was just fabulous, so congrats to everyone involved and thank you Wald Lake Central for sharing your talents with us. It was amazing. I also want to thank the community member who brought forward a book in last, last month's meeting that was in a couple of libraries. And, you know, there, it taught us some things, I think, or at least I learned some things as a board member, and that is that, you know, there is a form, there's a form that's on the wlcsd.org website. It's in the Board of Education, District Policy, Administrative Regulations, 3006 Citizen Request for Consideration, that's out there, it's available. And, and I think that parents and others in the community should know about it and it's not, it's, it's not a, it has options in the form, so you can request a whole range of things, from don't assign it to my child, to withdraw it from everybody, to reconsider it or assign it to another grade level, you know, and so it's, it's quite a robust thing and as folks are bringing forward more concerns, I just thought it was important to, to mention that I learned that that is available to folks in the community. And then I know we're gonna move to the consent agenda and I do have some comments before we vote to approve that. Edit and approval of the minutes in the consent is, is really meant to be a unanimous thing. There isn't technically, you know, a bypass the discussion and, and just outvote, you know, what's in the consent agenda. We're supposed to agree on the consent agenda and to force the issue, any one of us would just openly oppose, you know, and then, then we have to deal with that separately. But tonight, I'm not gonna do that because I believe as a board, you know, we are genuinely talking about and trying to address some of those form and format type issues. I did, however, you know, so I, I think it's important to mention that I particularly did request some edits to the minutes that weren't made. This month, they were mostly in public commentary, where the notes were not wrong, they just weren't very proportionate to what we heard. And so, you know, we know there were 70% or a wide majority of speakers raising concerns about sexual content and refusing opt-up forms and security, and the notes in those areas were less than 45% of the notes, and three speakers with very different opinions were 40% of the notes. So, so that was a little bit of just, some of the exception that I took. The meeting minutes are meant to be a record of the actions that take place and there's a whole mountain of rules that dictate how and what we do there and I'm excited to address those with all of my colleagues in future board meetings. Some of the items I'm hoping we address are how to edit and approve them, and the timing, and how much detail should be in the, in the minutes, and, and why we don't vote to approve an agenda. So I also want to be supremely clear that, as I mentioned that and, and we moved to the consent agenda, there's absolutely no, I'm not, I'm not intending to, to say anything that is any reflection whatsoever on our, on our minute taker extraordinaire, Mrs. Oval, who does an amazing job. I think we'd be lost without her and, and so I'm super grateful for her. Thank you for your patience with the longer commentary, but I do think this is a lot quicker than, than objecting to the consent agenda and causing a whole bunch of other stuff to happen, so.
Mr. Siegler.
If you think yours was long, wait. First of all, echoing on Tarzan, phenomenal. The student talent and faculty and community talent that we have in this area is unbelievable. I had the pleasure of seeing Mrs. Dunn there, who was working behind the scenes and helping to construct sets and then when somebody else was showing, well, she did this, she did this, she did this, and her husband, and, I mean, it was just amazing and my hat goes off to every performance that we've had this year because they all have been wonderful. A little plug, I know Jackie Girwin, if you're watching, the Foundation for Excellence Golf Outing in June, we are still open to sponsors, we are still open for golfers. If you want to have a wonderful afternoon and help support the foundation, please join us. Employee Appreciation Month goes without saying, thank you to everybody in this district that contributes in any way, shape, or form. Mr. Chatfield touched on the beam at Western, heard some very nice comments on that. If you look at the postings, you'll start to see student accolades for our upcoming graduation and for our senior students, just a wonderful tribute. Mrs. Les touched upon the budget and when Dr. Bernie and I were in Washington, we had the pleasure of meeting with all of our representatives and senators from Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County. And we went in with a priority list of things that we would, we wanted them to address. This was the first year that I have in my memory where all of them were on the same page. I mean, there was an argument about what we needed to do. And I know it's a little bit early to have the wish list, but some of the things that we're already seeing come up, proposed in the budget, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is increased funding for mental health and IDEA. One thing about funding for special ed, IDEA, is that's one of those things that once it goes in, they very rarely take it back and it stays in that line item forever. So happy to see that. Meals, free lunch and, free breakfast and lunch for students who qualify. There's a talk, there is actually a discussion for free lunch, free breakfast, and free dinner for those students who qualify, which would greatly benefit everybody. Safety, literacy funding, early childhood education funding, teacher recruitment funding or build your own or build within, funding for that. If all of this comes true, I'll be happy to dance on the desk because it will, it'll be one of the greatest accomplishments we as school board members have had, have had the benefit of, and it has long-range effects on all of us, so thank you.
Ms. Tice.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Castergrande. I think as we approach the end of the school year, the months just seem to go by faster and faster, but I too got to go see Tarzan a few weeks ago. And so it's just evident we have a lot of talent here in our district. And I also saw Mrs. Dunn there and her daughter had one of the leading roles playing Jane and she just had to be, that had to be a proud mom moment because her daughter did a phenomenal job and she's got quite, quite the beautiful voice. So it was really good to be able to begin some discussion surrounding security this past month and because it did take place in closed session, we can't really discuss that here. But it was good to get that conversation going and just kind of see what, just some different ideas administration has and just one thing I kind of was thinking about is it might be good to maybe see like what administration is prioritizing out of those ideas as we go to make, you know, further plans surrounding security. But I look forward to just continuing that, that discussion. Last month, a community member did share with the board a book that was found in our library containing some explicit pornographic written content. I think we did, as Mrs. Fernandez said, learn a lot just about the process, so since she explained it, I won't, I won't repeat that, but I did read through the excerpts that were given to us and it was kind, it was rather appalling that such a book with such inappropriate graphic content would be in our schools, available to our minors. So I really want to thank Dr. Bernia for his quick action in removing the book wallets under review. For the record, I don't think books should be banned simply because one doesn't agree with viewpoints expressed in the book. There's a lot of things that transpire in history that I don't like or agree with, yet I can't change what history is. I believe children should be taught historical facts free of biased opinions and I believe they should be taught facts even when they're facts that maybe I don't like. I think we can all agree that, you know, even history, even historical facts should be taught at age-appropriate times to kids. But I think that children should be taught how to take facts and draw their own conclusions based on unbiased facts and they need to be taught how to think, not what to think. So with that being said, I think that this book in question, in, in my opinion, after reviewing it, was definitely a type of pornography. It wasn't just a history book that we're trying to, you know, teach historical content to our kids through. And so I just don't think it has any business being in our schools. A couple of months ago, we had a discussion just on the district devices that were, we were trying to purchase for the students here and so the question was raised about, you know, how are we gonna protect kids from being able, or from, you know, going to sites that were inappropriate? You know, and we said that the district does take measures to block pornographic sites. And so I just think it only makes sense then that we would also block all pornographic content, whether it's depicted with pictures online or words in a book.
Mrs. Levin.
Thank you, Mrs. Castergrande. So I wanted to give an update kind of on what I've been up to the last couple of weeks. On April 19th, I traveled to Lansing to attend Michigan Association of School Boards Behind the Scenes Event. It was a great day of presentations and networking. I had meaningful one-on-one conversations with several of our local representatives. One thing that surprised me about the Masby portion of the day was how much focus they place on noneducational things. They wanted to talk about electric buses, evaluations, health clinics in schools, but there wasn't so much focus on improving student educational outcomes. And I realized we have been part of the Masby Association for a long time, obviously Mr. Siegler sits on its board, but I'm less impressed with the group the more I interact and I don't know what other similar organizations exist that maybe we could draw from, but I hope that our board, our administration, will seek a more balanced viewpoint when considering where we get our advice and guidance. Our focus should be on providing a quality education to our students and to do it safely. Hard stop. Hard stop. I think we should reconsider, you know, our membership, our participation in the organization if it's not focusing on these two topics. Additionally, I also attended the Leia event about substance use and dangerous consequences that was held at CHS. The panel was fantastic. I'm glad we had a few people in the audience. I wish we had more parent participation, but I know an evening in the spring with everything that families have going on is certainly hard. Hopefully, if there's a good recording, we can find a way to put that out on the website. It's clear from the presentation that vaping and marijuana use are the top two substance issues in our community and in our schools. And we parents need to take an active role to curb these issues. We have to take responsibility for our own children. We can't rely on the schools to do it for us, for other people to do it. It starts at home. And I think that we as parents really need to take it seriously because it is a problem here in our own district. Finally, it's been touched on a couple of times, but we've got Employee Appreciation Week. Some schools are celebrating this week, some schools are celebrating next week. I just want to say thank you to all of the amazing teachers and staff in our district and to the parents and PTAs who are going to be or are already putting on amazing staff appreciation weeks. As a former PTA president myself, it's a big undertaking, but it's really fun. And I think the parents have as much fun as the teachers do. So thank you all for everything that you do for our district.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Say I'm going to be quick and simple tonight. Everyone heard about Tarzan, it's fantastic. Go see all the shows in the district, not just Tarzan, it's, we're at the end of the year, but Western, Northern, and Central do fantastic shows. The middle schools have fantastic shows. So I encourage everybody, if you've not seen one, go see them. All of our sports teams are wrapping up their seasons as well, since we're coming to the end of the year. Go watch some of their events. You know, we have some great athletes, some great, you know, actresses and actors, you know, in our systems. You know, go check out what Wild Lake has to offer because we are a fantastic community and we have fantastic amount of talent. And our kids and our families are fantastic. I want to say thank you to every one of the staff members in Wild Lake. You guys are phenomenal. Wild Lake cannot be who we are without you. So thank every one of you, and I appreciate you.
A couple of things that I'm going to miss coming up in May, so I just want to give a couple of shout-outs. So we're soon going to be celebrating our retirees. And that is always one of those celebrations I really enjoy. We get to hear stories about them. Mr. Russo did an absolutely phenomenal job last year. I'm sure he'll do a wonderful job this year, too, just, you know, highlighting them individually, et cetera. You know, it's a private invited event, but it's always well, very well-attended. But I just want to do a shout-out to our retirees because we really appreciate you and will miss you in all of your years of dedication and service. Also, I will miss our PTSA Council celebration, which is going to celebrate all of our PTAs and PTSA leaders. And I just attended the PTSA Council meeting with Mrs. Levin. And I'm going to specifically shout out that Mrs. Sarah Piggott, who is our PTSA Council President right now, is stepping down. And I want to thank her for her service. She's been absolutely wonderful in helping to lead all of our parent groups across the district. And we really appreciate your support and your leadership. Next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes, proposed April 13, and for a special meeting and also for a regular meeting. We also have personnel recommendations and administrative appointment, new hires, resignations. We also have a purchase for math intervention, grade six through 12. That particular purchase is coming from the general fund for $41,287. We also have disbursements in the amount of $22,906,001. And we also have a Head Start Director's Report.
Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We're going to move on to purchases. Dr. Burnea, the first one is our K-2 elementary science curriculum.
Yes, Mr. Dervin, Mrs. Kohansky.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Burnea. So we do have a K-2 elementary science curriculum that has teacher guides, professional development, and online support after review from our K-2 Science Committee. And looking at a number of resources, they've selected this kit-based program. And it's very engaging. And the staff that were part of the Adoption Committee are very excited about this recommendation. It's from Serial City Science out of Battle Creek Area Mathematics and Science Center. The publishing date is 2022 on those materials. And the amount is $111,155.94, which will come out of the general fund.
Got a motion? Mr. Siegler.
I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of K-2 Elementary Science Curriculum, Teacher Guides, Professional Development, and Online Support provided by Serial City Science, Battle Creek Carrier Mathematics and Science Center, 2022, for $101,115.94 for the general fund.
Any discussion? Mrs. Fernandez.
So I have issues with the criteria that I want to highlight for this purchase and for other purchases. I know that the criteria are going to vary a little bit for each book that we purchase. And I do understand that the curriculum selection falls squarely in the realm of administrative processes. And I also appreciate the many educators that devote their energy to finding the right books for us. But the criteria that I personally want to see removed, this is my opinion, from future book evaluations, I'm going to highlight three of them. The first is usually, oftentimes, there's an alignment with inquiry-based teaching as a specific criteria. And this particular book is K-2, so the teacher aids that tell teachers not to provide information or procedures until students have had the opportunity to develop ideas of their own. Or at no time, children are going to be told they're wrong, or they shouldn't be immediately corrected are just baffling to me. And I hope, I have to believe that many of our great educators, quite frankly, just ignore those instructional guides that are part of those materials. So the criteria aligning with inquiry-based training or teaching, I have some concerns about. Another criteria is culture and gender representation and inclusive education. And I think my challenge with that is that it's oftentimes pushed through the specific instructions to the teachers. And the third criteria that I am hoping that future evaluating committees consider removing or modifying is presentation, including accuracy of materials, but there's no real mention or qualifier that sets an expectation to be balanced or apolitical. So those are three criteria that I am challenged with in this book purchase. And for that reason, I am intending to vote no on this curriculum. And I will probably apply those same standards to future book purchases. And I hope that some of the selection committees will consider their criteria. I do think we can choose great books. I think sometimes we might choose the same books. But putting those as specific selection criteria for me is a challenge. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five-one. Next, we have under purchases, the AED, Automated External Defibrillator. Dr. Burnea.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lons.
Thank you, Dr. Burnea. The purpose of the additional purchases of the AED is to increase the safety of our students and the guests in all of our buildings. We will be adding approximately two to every, let me rephrase that. This will allow us to have two AED devices in all of our elementary schools and three AED devices in all of our two-story buildings. So that is the purpose of this purchase.
Got a motion? Mrs. Kaplan.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of AED Automatic External Defibrillators from School Health Corps, an AEP-A cooperative vendor, quantity, excuse me, twenty-five, for $45,362.39 from the School Aid Grant Fund.
Support? I can support. Any discussion? Mrs. Levin.
Yeah, just a question for Dr. Lons. Will any of these AE, or are any of these AED devices outside of the building?
Not at this time, no.
Will this purchase change that?
It will not change that at this time.
Okay.
Any other questions?
If I may follow up.
Sure.
At the high school level, all of our trainers do have portable AED devices they bring with them.
And are trainers at all athletic events?
We have a trainer on site for all practices and all athletic events, but they can't be at each spot all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Next, we have a settlement agreement. Dr. Burnea.
The district has reached a settlement agreement in a lawsuit. We met about this earlier, and you have our recommendation.
Mrs. Casgranda.
Mrs. Levin.
I move that the Board of Education accept the settlement agreement for the case named GT on behalf of IT versus Wild Lake. I was proud that I figured out what OBO is. Wild Lake Consolidated Schools at All and authorized the superintendent to execute the agreement on behalf of the district.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Next, we have the social studies curriculum recommendation. Dr. Burnea.
Back to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Burnea. I'll preface this with just saying this is the presentation of the committee's recommendation of this textbook. So there will not be action taken until the following board meeting in June. So just to preface this. The current second and third grade social studies curricular resources are teacher-adapted lessons from 2009, which have been taken from Oakland Schools units. And the content is in need of updating as these units do not align with the Michigan Social Studies standards developed in 2019. They do not align with the C-3 framework for inquiry-based teaching and have limited materials and resources available. They do not have textbooks and represent outdated teaching strategies with no online or digital resources for teachers or students. The committee, led by Andrea Abraham, our K-12 Social Studies Coach, reviewed several resources, and they have recommended the resource, My World Interactive Savvas Learning, 2019 and 2023. The recommendation summary from the committee and the quote for the purchase of $188,925 is being presented to the board. And the process has been endorsed by administration. A motion for approval of this textbook purchase will be presented at the June 1st, 2023 Regular Board Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have advanced placement government recommendation.
Right back to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Burnea. Yes, again, this is just a presentation of the committee's recommendation at this point. The current high school advanced placement government textbook is from 2011 and no longer meets the College Board expectations of resources published within the last 10 years, as well as the 2019 College Board guidelines that were established for this course. The committee, again led by Andrea Abraham, our K-12 Social Studies Coach, reviewed several resources. The committee focused on resources with engaging instructional strategies, online access for teachers and students, supplemental materials and resources, and an aligned assessment component. The recommended text is Presidential Election Update: American Government Stories of a Nation for the AP Course, Bedford, Freeman, and Worth, 2021. The recommendation summary from the committee and quote for purchase of $23,874.95 is being presented to the board. The process has been endorsed by administration, and a motion for approval of this textbook purchase will be presented at the June 1st, 2023 Regular Board Meeting. Thank you.
And next, we have Transportation Services Second Amendment Extension. Dr. Burnea.
Let's move to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Burnea. Since 2013, Dean Transportation has proven to be a reliable partner in providing safe and effective pupil transportation services. In November of 2021, a Service Enhancement Incentive, the First Amendment, was approved that was used exclusively to increase the compensation of all Dean employees in Wild Lake schools. The Dean Transportation First Amendment expires this June 30th, 2023. This amendment assists in recruiting and retaining transportation employees in a challenging employment market. Administration recommends extending the amendment, which would be the Second Amendment, for an additional three years from July 1, 2023, through June 30th, 2026, which coincides with the end of the current transportation contract with Dean.
Got a motion? Mrs. Kaplan.
I move that the Board of Education approve a three-year extension of the Service Enhancement Amendment, Second Amendment, with Dean Transportation from July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2026, and authorize the superintendent to execute the necessary contract documents.
Any discussion? Ms. Tice, go ahead.
So I'm just curious because I thought that that had, that used to be, I heard just like a one-year thing. So I'm just curious as to why it's now going up to three years.
Mr. Chatfield.
So it was approved in November of 2021 as a result of the loss of a number of employees who left four neighboring districts who were frankly poaching our employees with hiring incentives and wage increases that we had to find a way to combat in order to provide transportation services. When that situation occurred, we lost, I believe, 11 or 12 bus drivers in the span of a couple of weeks. We went through a period from November through February where we canceled a rotating series of routes, sometimes as many as 12 routes per week, that put an extreme burden on parents to get their children to school. So this performance incentive was approved, again, used exclusively to increase the wages of transportation employees so that we could attract and retain them. And it proved successful. That amendment had an expiration date. We had hoped that the hiring challenges would be temporary, that, so it had an expiration date of June 30th this year. We are in an environment where we are still challenged with hiring enough bus drivers to drive all of our routes every day. And without continuing this amendment, the wages of our transportation employees will be cut. And we frankly fear we will lose a large number of drivers, which will make it extremely difficult. Frankly, in some cases, we will undoubtedly be faced with, again, canceling routes, which was a very unpleasant time for us.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if I understand correctly, just from all the notes that we got, this is being funded through the general fund, like it's already in there right now. This is just a vote to continue that on? And is, like, so that won't affect any, like, funding for anything else?
That's correct. No, that's correct. So when the board initially approved the enhancement amendment, it did require an amendment to the budget. That amendment was then built into the budget for the 2223 school year. And so, those funds are currently, Mrs. Les can correct me if I'm wrong, but those funds are currently planned for to be included in the upcoming budgets for the remainder of the Dean contract, so for the next three years, which are general funds.
Okay. Okay, and Mrs. Levin, I think you wanted to comment.
So one of the items that's currently being undertaken is a facilities study. How is the potential decline in enrollment, perhaps leveling off of that, being taken into consideration when it comes to committing to, you know, paying potentially more money for three years if that need potentially changes? What happens if we've committed to it, but, you know, number of routes decreases, number of drivers needs to decrease? How is that being factored in? And perhaps should it be something shorter so we can address it as needed? Is there a reason it has to be three years as well?
The expectation is that we will need the number of routes that we currently have for the foreseeable future. We pay on a per route-per-day basis. So we only pay for the number of routes that go out on the road every day. We expect, you know, we know that our enrollment numbers are projected out for the next few years. We believe we are going to need to compensate our employees at their current level in order to avoid losing many of them, regardless of the number of kids. to avoid losing many of them, regardless of the number of kids we're transporting.
Right, but why does the contract have to be for three years? Like previously, it was, it sounded like maybe a little over a year. Why does it have to be three years committed to that? Not that we don't want to pay drivers more, but maybe in a year, something's different.
The current contract with Dean Transportation runs through June of 2026, so this amendment would simply coincide with the end of the current Dean contract, so it would be an amendment that would run alongside the existing contract. And then, at that time, the entire arrangement with Dean will have to be renegotiated.
I just wanted to say also that if the, if our enrollment does impact the number of routes that we have, then we're just paying for less routes. We're paying for less people. So the amount that's in here in terms of the cost is what it would currently be. That would actually decrease, and we would have less expense if our routes did, in fact, go down. So we're not locked into a total contract price. We're just locked into a per route-per-day price.
And this is for, I'm sorry.
If I could just add one thing, though. I think that the, a big reason our recommendation goes out three years is because the marketplace has not cooled down with respect to compensation and competition to hire drivers. So our drivers are currently being sought by other districts. And so it's our belief that an annual re-up of this, you know, I can tell you that there has been, there's been some stress and some outreach from drivers to administration about this proposal and about this going forward. So we believe that the three-year recommendation will hopefully stabilize that and settle the matter with Dean Transportation until it's time to renegotiate the contract. We believe that this is an attempt or a good-faith effort to stabilize our employee pool, and so that's another reason for it. Our feeling was if this became an annual thing, drivers might look to drive for other districts in the area where they don't have to annually wonder if, you know, this recommendation is going to be carried forward, going to be wondering if, you know, their wage is going to decline every July 1st. We just wanted to stabilize it and extend it to the end of the contract. So that was another reason for our recommendation.
Mrs. Fernandez.
So I'm very sympathetic to that concern that folks would have, especially if this amendment expires June 30. I also feel like, I think I understood properly that there's no reason we can't do a shorter Second Amendment, and there's no reason why we couldn't add another amendment to that as we see the results of the facility study and some of the other things that are in play. We couldn't quickly or more timely extend a third time after we get some more insights. So unless I have anything wrong there, I would, I would like to make a motion that we amend the motion on the floor to run from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, and I would be in favor of something more timely as we look at how all these pieces fit together.
I would be extremely concerned to change that to a one-year versus a three-year for exactly what Dr. Bernia just said. We have already seen that our transportation department is worried and concerned. There, in this area, I absolutely have trust and support in Dr. Bernia as well as Mr. Chatfield and Mrs. Les. There is, there is no way, I'll tell you, I was here when we privatized transportation. That was, by and large, the most difficult meeting that I ever ran. And to me, it's almost insult to injury not supporting this for them and giving them three years where they don't have to keep thinking about it for every year and wondering again, as Dr. Bernia said. To me, this is the least we can do to try to tell them that we absolutely support them, and we don't want them to have a wage decrease. Mr. Seigler.
The outcry from parents from the community, the chaos that this caused at the buildings when bus schedules were canceled and parents were forced to drive or carpool their children to school was something that I don't want to have to go through again, and I don't want to have to put our parents through that again. The cost is still, it's built in right now for the three-year period as part of our budget. We are only paying by the route. I cannot see any reason why we wouldn't want to support this.
Yes, Mrs. Kaplan.
See, I agree with Mr. Chatfield, Dr. Bernia. We need to support our bus drivers and make them feel that they're comfortable here in Wald Lake and doing a one-year contract extension. There again, in a six months, they're going to be worrying, are they going to have a job? Are we going to take the price hike for them? Or what are we going to do? And I don't think that anybody wants to feel that in any form of employment that you're at, that every year you have to worry what kind of employment situation you're in. So I agree with the three years.
So I understand, and I think I'm being very clear, that I'm not, not, I am also very much in favor of showing our employees that that's important, but we have other large-scale items, and we're told repeatedly that there's decreases in the population. And we did a year and a half in it, in, when the situation was far, far worse. So I still, you know, I still feel like it's, you know, we can easily revisit this. We don't need to make them wait to the very last minute. And, you know, perhaps it's not an amendment to a motion that we'll carry, but I feel like, you know, I feel like we should be thinking about an immediate fix for this so that they don't have to worry anymore, and we can revisit that in light of, sooner in light of the other district studies and issues that we're looking at.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm going to call the vote.
So don't we need to vote on the amended vote?
I, I think we need to vote on the motion that's on the floor.
I think if a motion is, if you move to amend the motion, you have to first unravel that motion and then vote on the motion that's on the floor. Okay, well, conversation proceeded immediately after that. Can I remove, can I remake the motion?
No, I'm going to call for the vote, and then if you want to do something else, we can go from there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. Five one. Parent Advisory Committee Board Representatives. Dr. Bernia.
Dr. Lons.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Oakland, the Oakland Schools Plan for the Delivery of Special Education Programs and Services specifies that each district appoint two parents to serve on the Oakland Schools' Special Education Parent Advisory Committee for a three-year term. Corey Hensley and Amy Page have agreed to be representatives on the Oakland Schools' Parent Advisory Committee from the 2023-2024 school year through the 2025-2026 school year. And I don't believe Amy or Corey is here, but I would like to also state that Corey will also be the County Wide PAC president. So we're very fortunate to have her as a part of our district, and we're fortunate to have Amy willing to give both of their service. Thank you, Dr. Bernia.
Mrs. Levin.
I move that the Board of Education approve Corey Hensley and Amy Page as parent representatives to the Oakland Schools Special Education Parent Advisory Committee from the 2023-24 school year through the 2025-26 school year.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Resolution for the, I always like to have this spelled out, but I'll just use the acronym MHSAA Cooperative Team Application. Dr. Bernia.
We're going to go back to Dr. Lons.
Thank you, sir. Wald Lake Central, Western, and Northern High School Boys Hockey Teams' participation has declined over the past several years and similarly throughout the state of Michigan. As a part of history, in 2016, Wald Lake Central did not have enough players to form a full team and formed a cooperative agreement with Waterford Kettering and Waterford Mott High Schools. During the 2021-22 school year, Western formed a cooperative team with Pickney High School, which runs through 23-24 season. Wald Lake Northern is now faced with a shortage of players for the 23-24 season. Administration has reviewed all of our high school boys hockey programs, and the best option for our district is to form one unified team. Wald Lake Western needs to complete its two-year, two-year agreement with Pickney High School ending in 23-24. Administration recommends that Wald Lake Central and Wald Lake Northern form a MHSAA Cooperative Team for the 23-24 season, and Wald Lake Western will then be added to the MHSAA Cooperative Agreement in '24-'25 to form one unified Wald Lake team. To go back a little further in history, just as a reminder, when boys hockey came to Wald Lake, it was one unified team. We were fortunate at that time to have it expand, and as with many of our sports, it's now contracting. This is the maybe third cooperative agreement I brought this year. So it's an opportunity for us to continue to give opportunities to our students and athletes. Thank you, Dr. Bernia.
Mrs. Kaplan.
I move that the Board of Education approve the MHSAA Cooperative Team Application to combine Wald Lake Central and Wald Lake Northern High School Boys Varsity and Junior Varsity Ice Hockey Programs beginning the 2023-24 athletic season.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Kastgrind.
Yes, Mrs. Kaplan.
With the motion where it says, you know, the 2023-24 athletic season, do we have to do this again then to include Western the following year?
Ms. Silver would know better than I on that one.
Yeah, actually, let me look real quick. I'm pretty sure. I don't think he can do it this soon. He gave him two forms just the other day. That's my understanding. That you're approving this year, because he can't do it two years until they, yeah, is that their contract? Is that their contract? Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Board Policy Review. Dr. Bernia.
Yes, so just last week, we had a really good session where we started to discuss this, and the district has brought forward, administration has brought forward a compilation of all the updates to the board for your consideration. So tonight is the first reading, and then we'll have a month to go through that, and then we'll come back for the second reading at our meeting on June 1.
Okay, and everybody's received the information. If you have questions, please let Dr. Bernia know. We'd be happy to answer anything. All right, last, we have the resolution, Oakland Intermediate School District, the OISD Budget. Dr. Bernia.
We're going to go to Mrs. Les.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The Michigan School Code requires the intermediate school district budget to be presented to the Board of the constituent districts for review. In addition, each constituent Board of Education, not later than June 1 of each year, shall review the proposed ISD budget and adopt a board resolution to support or disapprove the proposed budget. I, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, I've reviewed the proposed 2023-24 Oakland Intermediate School District's proposed budget, and based on the information presented and the review of the materials provided, I do support the budget.
Okay. Mr. Seigler.
I, as the Board of Education, support the proposed Michigan Intermediate School District budget expressed in the resolution.
Any discussion? Mrs. Levin.
So I totally support Mrs. Les and, and the work that she does, but I have some questions about the Oakland Schools budget. Unfortunately, they're not questions that can be answered by anybody here, and the budget is 117 pages, so it took some time to go through. Unfortunately, I couldn't come up with my questions in any reasonable amount of time to get an answer. But some of the questions that I had were, you know, kind of higher level, like the budget seems to be largely based on an assumption that real estate values and therefore tax revenues will be increasing. This is really contrary to sound business practices, not to mention what most financial experts are forecasting for next year. It's far more likely that a recession is upon us, so it would seem that the budget should be more conservative, and that's concerning to me. The fund balance appears to be going down year over year, so in layman's terms, this just means that, you know, we're dipping into the saving, they're dipping into the savings, rather than creating a budget that doesn't need to dip into the savings, and it would seem more fiscally responsible to find a way to balance that budget without having to decrease the fund balance over the several years that they mentioned. I was also very interested in what are cabinet incentives that are increasing by 24%? The cabinet of Oakland Schools. I was curious why communication services are going up 11%, research and evaluation assessments are going up 15%, phone costs are going up 17%. And then, when you compare the Oakland Schools budget to, like, the McComb ISD, the flow-through to schools in Oakland Schools is only 41% versus in McComb, it's 76% of their budget. So why is the flow-through in Oakland County so much lower? And then enrollment is down, you know, across the county over the last several years by, you know, some percentage, but the budget is up 116%. So I'm not understanding why these things don't align. And then finally, one of the talking points for the Oakland County School Board Association and Masby, or one or the other or both, was supposed to be an increase in attention or funding to CTE, Career and Technical Education, and it appears that the budget for that is staying flat. So I'm not sure how that's reconciled with the associations that we are a part of. So for these reasons, I will be voting no on the budget, and I would like to see Oakland Schools answer these questions and perhaps come back with an amended budget.
Mrs. Les, do you have any comments on any of that? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but anything else that, sorry, I kind of did.
I fully respect the questions, and it is certainly a large document. Took me a long time to get through it as well, so I would really respect getting the answers to those. I know that we've already sent those to them, and I have not yet heard back, but I'll let them respond.
Mr. Seigler.
I do know in regards to one of the first comments you made about the real estate valuation. When we, they had a presentation, I would say, two months ago from three, the individuals that were taught, they, they talked about the three-year and five-year projections on budget and real estate, and they felt the valuations were actually going to be increasing, so, but that, you know, that was, that was part of the GRC, so.
Yeah, a few big failures ago.
Ms. Nice.
Just a quick question, like, is there any way to maybe table this until those questions can get answered?
No, because we, we have to have this approved by June 1, so I don't think so, no. Because we're not going to have another meeting like this where we're going to vote before June 1.
Any other comments, discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, that is three-three. That does not pass. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.